All right, I'm here. Out of the clouds. Afternoon or morning, I guess, still almost afternoon.
On the cusp.
On the cusp, yeah. All right, so. The only one we're missing, we're missing one body, Ezra. So while we're waiting for Ezra. Let me read the public notice. So. This meeting is a subcommittee meeting of the Board of Appeals, including Jim McBane and Tom Lucy. And the developer developers group. And today is June 2nd, meeting starts at eleven thirty. And. Following. Consistent with the governor's orders, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to review and listen to a meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following audio feedback will be distorted in a meet, oh, sorry, following dial in number one. You want seven one five eight five nine two, meeting ID eight two nine two one six three two nine two six, passcode six one five two zero six. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and visually recorded in compliance with the Americans Disability Act. This location is accessible to all people with disabilities. Wakefield will provide reasonable accommodation to to and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with disability and require information or material in alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact town disability coordinator William Rinald, town engineer at seven eight one two four six six three oh eight, as far as advanced as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request advised note advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable requirements to remote to for remote access or for barrier of any barrier for you. Well, we're here basically to discuss, continue discussion on five ninety six North Avenue. We've been basically working around the massing and building placement and wetlands and all of that. And so we're going to continue that. We talked the other the last time, basically about what might be done as far as placement of the building to minimize the impact to the neighborhood. At the same time to provide for the project. Now, this is is visually open to the public. But we're not taking any questions or comments from the public. You can just watch the activity on this. So if you're in the public and not part of the group. That's the situation for you all. So with that. I guess, Chris, you're up because you were left with a task based on our last comments as to what's possible.
Sure. Is it okay to share my screen?
Well, if I give you permission, yes, which I will have to do. You got it.
Okay, great. Let me first. Just a quick refresher. The last time we got together, you know, we had talked about a building shift that divided the building into three pieces and and started setting back the building in a row here and trying to balance that with the setback from the wetland in the back and a shift in the parking lot. And after the last meeting, we talked about, geez, what if, what if we move the building a little bit closer to the street in this middle section and then pull these these two sides back, you know, can we, how close can we come to maintaining the biggest setback here in the wetland? And so we have a revised plan that we just shared with everyone this morning. That does a good job of balancing both, we believe. And and that's this plan. This is a little bit busier. It's a it's our topographic plan. It shows more information, if you will. What Peter's office was able to pull together is a revised building footprint that is a bit more simple, I'll call it in in. It's a presentation in the back of the building here. And he tried to see what he could do to tighten up those bump outs in the back of that in such a way that it would allow us to move the building as far back as possible. And so what we've done is we've taken the center portion of this three block building and pulled it forward. We have a little vestibule in the front here that sticks out. And we're holding a setback from the street line of approximately six feet to that vestibule. Most of the building obviously is set back much more than that. We are twenty feet setback with these two other parts of the building, the left and the right wing. And then that also puts us back a total distance of, I'm zooming in now a little bit, thirty eight and a half feet from these wings out to the proposed sidewalk that we'd like to build across the front of the property here on both sides, and it's symmetrical on both sides of the building. On the left side of the building or the north side, if you will. We created a an area where one could walk by the building. It's a six and a half, just over six and a half feet wide. And then in the back, just because of the shape of the building, we have a little bit more of a landscape area. I guess, Jim, you use the word courtyard like in the back and it buries from the back edge of sidewalk. The closest we get with these bump outs is four feet to the back edge of sidewalk. And then it bumps back to fourteen and eighteen and a half feet. And again, it's symmetrical across both wings of the property. On the backside. We pulled the parking lot a little bit closer to the building and established a twenty foot setback to our proposed limit of work almost everywhere. That's twenty feet with our silt fence line or erosion control line, which is this line with the circles on it. All along here, we have one pinch point where we'd like to go as close as fifteen at this one spot here to allow us to have this walkway on the left hand side of the north side of the building here. And then on given us about a foot or so on the high side of the self fence in order for us to be able to build this modular block retaining wall across the entire back of the property to maintain what we'd like to present as a twenty foot setback to the limit of the BBW, the bordering vegetative wetland, except for this pinch point here. We looked at the grading, redid the profile across the center line of the parking lot. And it all seems to work. The other thing, you know, once, once we agree to move forward with something, the next step for us will be to update the stormwater management design, just to make sure that all the numbers still work, if you will, for our stormwater management area, which is over here on the south side. But that's where we are right now, Jim and Tom. And so we're here to present this and have you ask questions and throw this thing around a little bit.
I had a couple of questions, Jim.
Go ahead.
What is Rebecca on? Can she remind me, what is the ConCon's policy in terms of setback? Is it, does that meet it, Chris, the twenty feet, I guess?
It does not. It's a twenty five foot setback, no disturb zone that the Conservation Commission seeks to maintain. And and we're showing it at twenty feet right now, and then as close as fifteen at this pinch point.
Yeah, that my second question relates to that pinch point. So in terms of constructability and maintenance, is that enough room? Now, at that pinch point, you said, what do you have, six feet there?
That's correct, six, the six point six feet, so just over six and a half feet here from the inside face of the wall to the to the face of the wall of the building. So I think for maintenance purposes, that's enough room, but I'd let Peter chime in if if he feels differently or has a comment on that.
No, I agree, actually. I think that would be great to have, but you need something. Right? Need to be able to get in there.
I was asking if that's enough.
Well, you're asking, you're asking constructability wise, not maintenance wise.
Yeah, it's a Tupac question.
Oh, constructability wise, no issues at all. You know, we, you know, the building stands on its own. And we'll have a foundation system that's that doesn't that's independent, if you will, of the retaining wall that we're proposing to build. So no problem there.
Well, it's more about getting equipment in there to trench whatever basically in that area. And it looks like this property is going up, what, six feet?
Elevation wise in this area, Jim?
Well, in the, I mean, if you look at the front of the building, you've got contour lines that are at about six feet up from the sidewalk line, right?
That's right.
So so across the site, pretty much, the building's up six feet in the air on on fill.
That's correct. We are, we are filling, filling the site. It varies anywhere, you know, it's three to four feet of the parking lot here. It really depends on where you're where you're looking. But in that range, let's call it the average of five feet, it's coming up.
So do, has there been any borings down in there yet?
We have not done any borings for, you know, structural, you know, related reasons, you know, purposes for geotech only for stormwater. We've done some test holes over on this side of the property.
And if, if, in fact, that's good enough on that side for percolation purposes, then the question is because this is all at one time or other filled or or wetland area, it's, it might be a little mushy. So how much material is going to have to come out here to get to, to get to solid material to build off from to start with? You don't know that yet. So even though there might be a six foot rise could be, you know, a four foot dig at the same time. And then so it's a ten foot rise to fill the site to make it workable. I guess, at least in, at least as far as the building is concerned.
Yes, I mean, on this side, Jim, it'll, you know, from a constructability standpoint, we are at elevation, roughly elevation eighty four over here, existing grade. And so, you know, we'll be removing the top soil and the subsoil. And that's probably, you know, eighteen inches or so of material. And then that'll put us down at around elevation eighty two, let's call it. And the first floor of this building is up at, you know, elevation ninety one. So, you know, even with our frost walls, we're going to be, you know, bringing in a little bit of structural fill, not much. And that'll be done first, you know, that's the deepest, sort of the deepest thing over here. There's plenty of room to to set these forms and 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 install them and pour the wall. And then once the wall is poured for the foundation, we would be backfilling against it. And then once we get up to the grade, that was the previous topsoil grade. We would then also at the same time start building this wall and and those, this wall would be brought up in this area in between, you know, filled in to get to that finished grade. So from a constructability standpoint, that's, that's, that's enough room to be able to get, you know, a small machine in here and to compact the soil in between these two walls.
So at the back of the site, I mean, around the perimeter of the site, you've got twenty foot setback, but there are areas where, in fact, you could get to the twenty five. You know, you zigzag the wall, but there's pockets of land there. Which from one point of view would be a nice place to get, get some trees, basically along the back edge of this thing. On the other hand, it, it basically cramps down to twenty feet when we, in fact, we've heard that what the ComCom's looking for would be twenty five, at least as a baseline. So I don't, can we, we can't put any vegetation within that twenty foot, right?
On the downhill side?
Uh, yeah.
I know Rebecca's on the line as well. I think you asked this question last time, Jim, adding plantings, as long as they were native in areas where there may not be enough vegetation, or let's just call it you know, enough native vegetation has not been a problem with conservation commissions in the past.
And what's native? I mean, is, is it, is a maple tree native?
Yes, most maple trees are native, but there are the the DEP and other state agencies maintain lists of invasive species, and we try to avoid those, you know, whenever possible.
So we physically, if we were to push the retaining wall back to twenty five, we physically end up with a plant strip that's within that, that twenty five foot area of native species. Assuming we can find some trees that are native species, basically, that could help border this on the wetland side.
Or just let it grow back, you know, the way it is. I mean, it's very thick and there really isn't, or we have no one to to shield, if you will, on the back here. This is all heavily wooded in here.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't gone that far back to to look myself, quite frankly.
And we back up, you know, we don't show the entire property line, but this, the the MBTA tracks are, you know, back here a little bit further to the, you know, west.
What I've seen of what's growing there, some of it doesn't look too healthy. Of course, it's overwatered or just, you know, just scrub stuff that's grown up, which I suppose from ConCom's, one of you is fine because it's natural. So here's another one, and this goes maybe to Peter to some degree and and to you, is that as, as pointed out is what I'm looking for, and I think Tom's looking for as well, is how do we shield this as best we can from the neighborhood? And originally, as you pointed out at the beginning, I was looking at stepping this building back into the site. And with this last iteration, we sort of slipped the left hand section back and lining with the right hand section and pulling the middle section ahead. That middle section is what, fifteen feet from the property line?
So the this middle section here, you mean, or or here?
No, right in the middle, yeah, right where the entry and windows and building is.
Sure. So that section, I can tell you. I don't know if you can see my CAD screen. Are you still looking at the PDF?
No, I'm looking at CAD.
Okay, so it's about eleven and a half feet.
To the property line.
That's correct.
Pretty close, huh? And so the rest of the grading is downhill grading is offsite.
That's right. And from the, from the building. You know, I think we showed these dimensions on the plan to the back edge of cur sidewalk here is almost thirty feet from this bump out to the, to the back edge of sidewalk here. That's thirty feet.
And will there be any, any visual difference between, like around the property line, or is it basically going to look the same going to the edge of sidewalk?
So we have an opportunity here to to landscape this uniformly, in my opinion, you know, with the permission of the town. So that it looks, you know, like a large landscaped area that gives us the ability to, you know, to do some hiding of the building on, you know, this side, you know, and this side.
Is that, is that permission something that's subject to the forty B? Or is that something you're seeking elsewhere through the city in town council? Or how's, how's that working?
Well, what I can tell you is that on a previous project in the town of Wakefield at Tarrant Lane, the zoning board of appeals with their authority under forty B authorized us to plant within the right of way because we had a big a big vegetated area between the traveled way and the right of way. So there's, there's definitely precedent.
Okay, but it would have to be subject to part of, one of the things you're requesting, right?
Jim, is, are there other projects, the recent projects on Salem Street where the folks are planting things in the right of way?
I can't remember at this point. I don't, I'm not sure. I'll answer Ezra for a moment, basically, I think, because, you know, he didn't attend the first meeting. So part of my thought Ezra was this was on the right. On the right side, basically, between the, that section of the building to the street was to, yeah, right there, was to plant that out heavily with trees. And then on the left side, as came up at the last meeting as well, was to plant that side heavily with trees as well, going right down into sort of the wetlands area with trees so that it didn't have, it didn't have the same appearance as the other buildings, which are just lawns. Basically, allow this to look more like what's there now, which is just a a tree area, overgrown area, basically with trees. So if we can, if we can.
Push the building back and hide it with trees. That's great.
Right. And and further, unfortunately, and I'm sure that we got the room, but we can certainly talk to the ZBA. Is I was thinking, when with this scheme, can we take the middle building and pull it ahead a little bit? So that is where the, between the trees, basically, that's where the attention goes, basically on the street. You don't see the majority of the rest of the building because it's screened. But you have a front entry, almost like, sort of like the hotel where, in fact, you know, the front entry stuck out beyond the, the whole, the rest of the units.
Yeah, like that awning that comes out with the doorman.
Yeah, right. But, you know, sort of give this a little more presence, but focus at that one point and hide sort of everything else.
No, I think that all makes sense. I was just, and it probably might be a question for Jesse, you can deal with later, but just to make sure they have the the right to plant in these various ways, you know, because I'm not, I want to be sure the ZBA doesn't approve something. And then if it turns out that the developer doesn't have the right to plant in that area, then we, you know, we would have approved it with this screening concept. And then they couldn't deliver the screening, but.
Now, I personally, this is the first I'm aware that became aware, basically, that 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 particular grade area basically is within the public realm. But I don't see the board not pursuing, if if this commission basically can come up with a strategy, I I'm not sure that the board would sort of say otherwise, basically, because I think it 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 provides more privacy for this project, it provides more privacy for the abutters and mitigate some of the appearance of the other two buildings that's on the street, which those buildings are okay because they're right across from other high, you know, on the street buildings. But if you look at the buildings across the street, they also have a forest of trees. Which really doesn't exist on these, on those two original buildings that are there. So whatever we can do to make this not part of them, but part of a different strategy, I think, is a good idea.
So Ezra, on the, you guys can see the aerial image, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Over here at five ninety eight and six hundred. These were apartment projects approved by the ZBA as a special permit projects, I believe. I don't think they were forty Bs, right, Jim?
No, they're not.
Yep. So there are plantings in the right of way on those projects. You can see that there's landscaping. You know, out front here, these are trees that were planted as part of these projects, and these were, you know, non forty B, if you will.
And they, and they've been given that those developments basically have basically got an agreement with the town to put the sidewalk in as well along there. So we'll continue with this project, basically. So it will connect up, so there will actually be a full sidewalk along that whole length of streetway.
On the, on the legal question, Ezra. I'll, that's something we'll need to talk about with town council. The project that Chris referenced, the Tarrant Lane project, he and I both were involved in the permitting of that. In my recollection is that the town council agreed with us that the the forty B permit could authorize.
In my recollection is that, that town council agreed with us that the, the 40B permit could authorize that from the town's perspective. So it's some, certainly something that's been, been done in the town. There's precedent for it. And I think the project you and I most recently worked on Ezra, the, the Belmont project, the board in that, that case also authorized work in the, in a town right-of-way. Um, so I think there, there's certainly precedent, but good, good issue to, to be mindful of as we move forward.
Yep.
So. Chris, so you, the, the, um, each access point of this building has to become handicapped accessible. Is that going to be an issue in the front? It doesn't look that we have much distance to go from the front door to the, to the sidewalk, or is the sidewalk rising like the site?
So, uh, you know, we haven't, um, we haven't worked, you know, worked all, out all the grading details, but, uh, my understanding is that our, our handicapped accessible route is in the back of the building here, where folks can, um, park, handicap folks can park. And, um, here's their handicap accessible ramp and enter the building, uh, and have access to the elevator. Um, now, well, we will provide for emergency, you know, egress, safe harbor locations. Uh, no pun intended on the safe harbor.
Yeah.
Uh, at the other, and exits, but, but I don't think this needs to be accessible on, on the front side, Peter.
In, um, in the building next door, 598 and 600, all entrances to the building are handicapped accessible.
Yeah, any, 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 my understanding is anything that's a public entry that can be utilized by the public is got to be accessible, accessible. And I think, you know, your front doorway and your right-hand side, the left-hand side, probably not because it's strictly an egress, but the right-hand one is going to be someplace, a place where people are going to park their cars and go through that doorway. So even though you're parking for accessible at the, at the back, that doesn't mean someone, a guest walking down the street, come to visit or something like that, can't go through the front door or go through the side door, whatever, whatever the control is going to be, but it's still a public entry to the building. So be very cautious about, you know, uh, using other terms at this point. So I, I think there's going to be some sort of ramping system that's going to have to come into this, come into this thing.
If that's a requirement, then, uh, then we may be faced with something like that. Um, that wasn't my understanding, but I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, we, the other thing I guess to think about, and maybe this is when the landscape comes, comes to town, is off the street to the sidewalk and up that hillside, maybe it's a set of stair, a stairway, basically, um, that's maybe as wide as the entry, um, that is more, is somewhat inviting, basically off the street, also reinforces the fact that this is the entry to the building, even though for pedestrians, basically, versus the rear, which is more for vehicles and probably, probably two doors that will be used the most are the rear one and the one on the right, because the people that live here will be using those mostly. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't, um, address this in the front to make it not just a, well, it's, right now, it looks like just a walkway, but assuming that it's going to have to be some sort of staircase. And the other thing I, I look at, it's not very inviting, um, the public corridor inside, and this is for Peter, is very, very narrow going front to back. It's, uh, it's really constraining. I, I, probably four foot wide because the doorways are three foot, so that says to me, four-foot wide car is terrible. So anyway, that's a, that's an internal planning issue. I think the other thing is to make, to get access on the right, I think this building across its breadth, right to left, is going to have to shrink some to give you the space. Otherwise, Chris, you've got to grab the space from somewhere else, which you don't have. I mean, you're already up against the property line on a lot of that. And I, even though I'd like to see more trees, um, at the right, far right-hand side, there's a section where you're not going to put trees, which is your drainage system, basically, because you don't want the roots into that system. But at the front, at the very front, um, in the turning radius area, basically, that can be heavily treated as well, to some degree. And maybe to get more trees to come down that area, maybe you've got to look at your drainage system extending itself further down. But I think there was some setback line you had to maintain as well, from the wetlands to this particular termination point.
Yes, we were, uh, very conservative in, in, uh, the way we drew our setbacks, uh, related to stormwater for, for our underground area here until we, um, and then most recent, you know, most recently, we had some face time with a gentleman from DEP. So, uh, we have some clar- clarification, um, on, um, on where that 200-foot zone extends to. So we may be able to square this off a little bit, Jim, and, and maybe open up this area.
Okay. Rebecca, you've been quiet.
Listening.
So what's your, what do you think the position would be on the 20 foot? If we can get 25, should we be going for 25?
I think it makes things easier. I think that it's likely that, um, during the NOI process, that they would ask to, um, get the 25 feet in those locations that look on this plan that is doable. Um, at 15-foot section, I think that can be worked with. Um, but again, I think in order to sort of have that exception for the 15-foot, it makes more sense to try to achieve the 25 as, as many places as possible.
Okay. I was thinking you'd go there. Okay.
Chris, on this plan, just looking at the, uh, what you're showing here for the wall going along the, the line of the wetlands, the section next to the building there where you've got the six and a half foot, and then the two corners of the parking lot, those look to me like the only places where we couldn't get to the 25. In the other locations, is it possible to move the wall out of the 25-foot entirely? Are there other feasibility issues of that?
Yeah, so we have, we have, uh, you know, pinch point, pinch points here, here. And, um, and obviously, you know, along this corridor, uh, but other than those pinch points, um, we, uh, I should point out, uh, that, uh, this, this program, uh, I forgot to mention one very important thing. I had to lose a couple of parking spaces to, to, to do what we've got shown here. Uh, if you remember, the, the dumpster corral was over in the, in this area here. And in order to maintain this 20-foot setback, um, it, it just didn't work, uh, to have the dumpsters over here anymore. So I had to give up a couple of parking spaces. We are right at the one and a half to one parking ratio now, where we had a little bit of more, more breathing room before. Uh, so, so, yeah, that's kind of important to point out, but to answer your question, Jesse, we, we do have a couple of pinch points and, um, we really, we really can't lose any more parking spaces.
Can you fit any more parking just at the very top of the, the lot on the right?
Up, up here, Ezra?
Yeah, you, if you squeeze into the public way, if you're, you know, I mean, I know, I know we want trees and stuff there, but it, if the, I mean, at least to give the board the option of trees versus two more spots.
Yes, I, I don't, um, I can't remember ever having done that on a plan, um, that is, you know, show parking within the right-of-way. We can, we can ask the question of the board, of the open board.
It looks so close. I mean, I think it'd be curb on the right-of-way probably, but.
Yeah, so these spaces are nine by 18, um, I can tell you exactly how much room we have there. That's the, uh, the area over here.
I mean, I'm never one to push for more parking, but it's just if, if that's a concern to the board, I won't.
Yeah, I only have, um, I have seven and a half feet to the, um, right-of-way line. So typically for a compact space, you know, we're looking for eight feet as a, as a minimum, as a, you know, absolute, uh, minimum. I don't like going narrower than, um, than that. Uh, that being said, you know, if we are only looking for six inches or a foot, you know, changing a couple of these parking spaces up here to compact spaces, you know, would open up, allow us to pick up two more.
So i- if you push this wall back up, just right up against Bakal, what are you going to do with snow?
Well, that's another reason why we, we landed where we landed, Tom, at 20, uh, because it's, it's kind of a, a nice little, you know, area to, to allow some snow storage as well. Uh, otherwise, we'd be forced to have to track it offsite every, you know, every major storm event.
Yeah. The, the neighbor, Tom, the neighbor next, the two projects next door, they're retaining walls right on the edge of the parking.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, to get, I mean, we're all talking about five feet, so we still could leave some property there for snow storage. Um, if we push this, if we push those edges back or take some of the crinkle out of it, so to speak.
Yeah, you can see what I did over here on the left side when I was creating this, uh, pathway. Um, I pulled the wall back away from, uh, this wetland flag. So in here, we're even more than 25, for example. That, that can happen when you, you know, when you straighten out some of these walls.
Yep.
All right. Other comments from anybody? Right, so not sure when our next meeting's going to be, but just for a minute, let's sort of see if we can wrap this thing up. The right, the, I think we're going to enter into now into some architectural zone, at least as far as the planning is, because I, I'm not, I'm sure we sort of got an understanding now of the site. So on the, on the building side, I think the left-to-right planning, basically, and this is going to be squashed down some in order, basically, to give the project a little more room, particularly on the right, particularly, basically, related to handicapped access. Um, also, I'd like to see the internal corridor, instead of being four-foot, be more like the rest of the corridors in the building. It's a very narrow, basically, system, and I think, once the complete planning's done in there sometime in the future, it will show up that it doesn't work very well. It's going to be too constraining. Um, we already know that one of the things that we will need to talk about further is basically grading and the fact that it's beyond the property line. I, I don't mind personally, the, the banking of this. I was thinking maybe it was a retaining wall, but I think banking it is probably better than seeing a six-foot retaining wall along the front of the property. It, uh, smoothes it out a little bit. I'd also like to see this center building move forward a little bit or the other buildings move back a little bit. I just, at this point, it's pretty close to the property line as it is, but I think it would help to have the center building be more predominant. And it may end up that the predominance comes in the architecture when we get to that point as to how to make it stand out in relationship to the rest. I think we're still maintaining, um, the planting on either end to basically buffer this to the street uh, across the whole, pretty much the whole front. And I guess the next question I have in my mind is, and Rebecca brought this up, is what conversation would have you had with, uh, Bill Rinald on your design? As far as drainage and all like connections and all?
So I know, um, I know Bill issued a preliminary letter, um, you know, with initial comments on the, on the design, and, uh, there were many questions related to the, um, uh, to the tributary associated, uh, potential tributary associated with Lake Quantapawat, which I think we've, um, flushed that out with a gentleman from DEP, so we know where we stand on that. You know, I think you all know by now that we designed, uh, the project, assuming that we were discharging to a, uh, close to a, um, a zone A. But, um, we, we do need to sit down with Bill. I don't think he's done a complete review yet of the stormwater management design. So that still has to happen, and, um, and my plan would be as, uh, Jim, as soon as, as soon as we sort of have a warm and fuzzy on the placement of the, uh, the site elements, uh, what I'm going to do is, uh, update the stormwater management design and get it into Bill's hands. He also wants to sit down and talk about, um, some mitigation that he'd like us to, uh, contribute, uh, regarding, um, some waterline improvements that are happening on, uh, North Ave. Uh, he wants us to, uh, to participate in the cost of some of those, um, improvements, uh, so we have to discuss that with him as well.
All right, I don't, um, I'm not sure that we need him at this meeting. At these meetings, I agree with you that once this gets formulated a little bit more and we're getting close. But I think, I think Peter probably has to weigh in a little bit more here on building size and shape to, uh, basically not, we're so tight in here at this point. It's, it squeaks, and, um, I'd like to see the plan basically shrink a little bit. Now, what's, what's that mean? I'm not going to say you can take a unit out or, or whatever at this point. Um, I'd just like to see it shrink a bit, so it gives you a little more breadth to do what you have to do to make the site work fully. At this point, I think that we, we'd like to see the setbacks go to 25 where we can. I don't think we have to push it further than that because, as Tom points out, snow storage and that sort of issue, we don't want to constrain ourselves there either at the same time. And if you can squeeze with maybe, um, the parking lot can be adjusted a little bit if, in fact, the building gets a little bit shorter right to left to give you the, enough space to get, um, those two parking spaces that Ezra was mentioned, basically, at the front. Because we're only talking about, I guess, at least by CAD, six inches or so um, in those areas, seems to me that we might be able to squeeze it out, but at the same time, we shouldn't fool ourselves. And if we can get rid of the drainage area and that rectangular area to the far right, so we can put some trees in there, better. I don't want to see, I, looking net, to the next-door neighbor, he's, he's not a great neighbor either. So somehow or the, we can, um, fix that area up as well, which means it affects your drainage plans.
Yeah, so, so it's a big effort, uh, just so you know, um, a lot of hours go into, um, updating the, redoing or, you know, doing the, redoing the calc's for stormwater and preparing the stormwater report, which is a three or 400-page document.
Yep.
And, um, and so, uh, I, I know, uh, in-house here between Matt Moore, uh, who's also another one of our professional engineers and I, we know that we can make, uh, this building footprint work, uh, the one that Peter gave us most recently, site-wise, drainage-wise, uh, but I hesitate to update the stormwater report um, until we know that we feel good about, um, you know, the, the elements not moving, you know, planometrically.
No, I, I agree, I agree. I just, I, I just posing the issue basically here in a way saying, you know, would be good to get more planting in that corner. Um, as I think we're very clear, planting there, planting across the front and that sort of stuff in, from an architectural point of view, basically make this building, at least the center one, be the predominant element in this. Now that is not just in the plan, but it also becomes something to do with the appearance of it. And I'll bring up, um, I know that some of the board members, um, didn't like the, it should be a darker building or whatever, or a stone building or clapboard building or whatever. I look at the neighborhood and, you know, I look at the colors in the neighborhood, I look at the materials in the neighborhood, and if this building comes snow and a brick or just dark colors, it's going to stick out more. And it's going to have to look more residential in its architectural design, but that's, that's for a little bit later at this point. So you need to get the plan, so it, even though you say it will, it works as it is, I, I still look at this and say, it's really, really, really tight, and it wouldn't take much to screw it up, basically. You know, gets out to the field and starts construction and like, so I, I think there's, there's more time that's going to be spent on the plan just, the plan itself to squeeze it and push it a little bit. And I know Peter's done some of that, but I think there's more to be done.
Do, do you, can I do annotate on this plan for a moment? I don't, it's, I don't see the option, but.
I think you have to be, uh, added as a person, right?
You have to be, yeah, I assume so. If I could find that person.
You need, you need, you want to go people, like I need my people, if that happens.
Peter, is this a good scale? Are you going to zoom in some more or? Peter, is this a good scale? Do you want to zoom in some more or? You're muted, Peter.
That's me.
Okay.
Trying to unmute him now. All right, let's see.
This is fine, Chris.
Okay, Peter, you're in.
I just approved you on my end, too.
Andrew, do you, can you pop in here for a second and see if you can help me find where I can annotate? Yeah, I have people right at the other.
I was gonna tell you, that's what you're gonna have to do next.
Going on.
Not just me. Well, either way, they can see my cursor.
Yeah, on my screen, for what it's worth, Peter, it says that you are controlling my screen, it says.
Just bring it up to full screen. Can you, let's see if they can see my.
There you go. I can see you now.
You can see it. So, so my, my concept as I looked at this was literally to come in, there's four bays, one, two, three, four. If I take three inches out of each bay, it's gonna give me a foot out of this building left to right. It's gonna happen over here, so that's two feet. But then I'm gonna come back into the center corridor, I'm gonna add a foot. So I'll reduce the building by a foot. There's a potential in here, maybe to do the same thing, go three and three, and maybe get another six inches, so maybe a foot and a half. But if you look at it in, because I agree with Jim, that that central corridor is, is at least a foot shy. So I need to do, but I need to take away and then I need to add. But I, I believe if I, I can, without creating too much impact on these bays on the left and right, take three inches out of each and get a foot, and then a foot over here, and then I'll come back in and add it back in and see if I can take anything out of these units additionally. But that, that, that was what I, as we were talking, as you were all talking, that's what I was thinking would be my next. My next attack on this thing is, is to try and shrink that, and I'll look at looking at the center building as, as higher, bigger, not a lot, but more prominent, that'll help me get this to read as the main building and then get left and right to read as wings. So I'll try and break the symmetry or the height lines across the front of the building. That's kind of where I'm thinking forward of it. I was just gonna draw some lines through there, but I, I think you are all following where I'm going. Make, make some sense?
Yeah, it does. I, Jim, you mentioned earlier, you know, is there any way to pull back the two wings a little bit more, or pull the center section forward a little bit? So we have, we have four feet between this back edge of sidewalk and these two wings over here. If we reduce that to two feet and have at least a little bit of green in between the sidewalk and the building, is that okay with you?
It should be planted pretty heavily, I think. Plus, it may be that the maybe the windows want to be on the side, particularly that left-hand bedroom instead of pointing to the back. I know, it looks like this, looks like the right-hand bedroom at this scale, if you wanna zoom in, yeah. So this is the bedroom two has already got a lot of windows. And bedroom three only has one set. So, you know, do we turn that into a black wall at this elevation and put the windows on the side for building three, bedroom three? You know? Not sure that I wanna be too, too close to the sidewalk as a, as a, as a person that's in this building.
Yeah, right now, we've got four feet.
Tom, you got any thought?
No, I agree. I think that if it's too close, the bedroom windows are gonna be right on the sidewalk.
And this is all just to give yourself a little more space in the front, where, I mean, you have thirty eight feet already, is that worth it for? I mean, I think you told me thirty eight versus forty feet, I'm not sure I'd know the difference. But if you tell me two versus four, I'd be pretty clear.
Right.
Well, it's, it's to the property line, which is, you know, I guess by this twenty feet. So we'd be pulling it to make it twenty two feet. But it, the object really is to, to, I mean, think about how important it is to make that center building project out, at least appear to project out, whether it's dimensionally or whether it's architecturally.
Or with the landscaping, right? I mean, we can, we can do a lot with that landscaping out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I I'm, I'm more in, I think I'm more to the, unless they can take it out of the bedroom inside, I'm not for reducing it beyond four feet.
Okay.
We just, as you guys all know, we're just trying to make sure the bedrooms are functional, so trying to keep sizes in there that actually work graphically, we can go back in and we will do that and show beds to make sure that the spaces are functioning okay. Definitely know we can do the window shift as long as we don't fill the the elevations, so we need to look at that a little bit, the impact is.
All right, so anything else?
Okay, just one thing to point out on that question, I mean, I don't wanna push on the parking in the front there, but if you did include those two more spaces, I think in theory you could then move the, the stormwater, you know, make that a little larger going to the top and, and save that space that Jim points out, you know, for trees over on the right. Right, if you extended that towards the top of the plan, another seven feet, that should make up that area you're, you take away on the right.
Yeah, you're going, you're going up against the property line is all you're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we're gonna look into that. We may even be able to, I think, square this off. So that's one of the things we're gonna be looking at to free up this triangle.
All right, so back again. So I, I think we're at a point where the back of the site, we're gonna give over as much twenty five foot spa- setback as possible along the perimeter. We're keeping some of that open space for snow removal. I'd like to see when we get to the landscaping, basically, what we do along the whole wetland edge, particularly basically at the front and how we deal with that, assuming that we can work on the, on the town property, basically, to make the whole thing better. Building, I think, needs some adjustment at this point. I'd like to see some character with this, both in the plan and maybe some ideas as to what we do with the front of this building, Peter. And how we deal with the handicap access. All right, so we're blending ourselves into the architecture at this point, but we still got the tail end of the, of the master plan at this time. All right, everybody got their assignments, I guess?
I think it's understood on our end, Jim. Chris has some work to do on his plan to tighten up that wall and see if he can call back some of those spaces and if that affects his ability to move the stormwater system. And then Peter's gonna work on narrowing up that building and make it more prominent in the center section and start working on the, the design and how it looks. In terms of moving forward in our scheduling, we're scheduled to be back before the board, the full board, next Wednesday. Jim, do you think it makes sense for us to be there and have Chris present this new plan to show them the direction that we're going, or would you like us to continue it again?
I think we could make a progress report.
Okay.
Just to get a, you know, thumb in the air, all right? As to where we're at, and what we're doing and the direction we're taking. But I wouldn't, just that at the moment, let's not get crazy about it. Let's get a sense from the rest of the group. The, these are the things where, this is the direction we're going in order to, to work this thing out and get a few questions from them, I guess, if there are any questions. Hopefully, basically get concurrence that the direction seems right. So I wouldn't, the next meeting's gonna be busy, because the last meeting, we lost five hearings, basically, so they've all piled up on our next meeting, too. So I would keep it short and sweet, I guess, is where I'm coming from.
Okay, understood. I, I think that's a good approach.
All right.
And then in terms of the next subcommittee, since we're all on the line, do we wanna try to schedule another one of those to, to look at to, to transition into architecture?
Yep, and that goes back to both Chris and, and Peter as to how long it's gonna take them to pull together.
So my thought was, first of all, Chris, I'll, I'll throw in do that cutting and pasting that I just talked about, so you can have the the more current footprint, right? That'll help, that'll help when you present, when that gets presented next Wednesday, that it's more current than it is today. Only on our end with the architecture, meaning, once we get the footprint to Chris, we'll go, start to go into elevation. So I don't know, given a solid week, week and a half, we should be able to meet again and start to present something. So that's, where would that put us in terms of calendar time?
Well, they I was gonna say a week from now, but that would be the day after zoning hearing and and just an outline, basically, what we're doing. If there was some feedback coming from that that would affect what you and Chris are doing, you might want more time.
I'm, I'm, I'm not available the ninth or the tenth anyway.
Okay. So.
Thursday mornings seem to be working for us. Do, do we wanna look at two weeks from today, on the sixteenth?
That works for me.
I could do it at a distance.
It's like we, I think we lost, we lost Jim, maybe.
Well, just for me, I could do Thursday morning, just not, it would have to be a different time, it'd have to be like nine thirty.
Works for me.
Or nine o'clock, if that's easier. Nine or nine thirty.
I'm open all morning, so whichever time works for everybody else. Rebecca, does that, does that morning work for you?
It would, but if the conversation specifically it might not be necessary that I'm there.
Yep, that's a good point, yeah. What do you think, are we at the point where we can release Rebecca to, to do other things on our Thursday mornings?
I think if we had something beforehand, what we could do too is get it to her. And if it's dramatically different from what we've seen here, is just ask her to make a comment or make a brief appearance at the meeting and then do that first, and then she can hop off. So either one of those is fine. If that, if Rebecca, if you don't mind doing that.
No, that sounds great.
Okay, that's good. Maybe, maybe it makes sense to have you back at a future meeting at some point, Rebecca, when we talk about the the landscaping, particularly the area back there by the, the wetlands.
That makes sense.
We can have Elliot program a, a series of Japanese knotweed back there. I think that's probably what the commission would like.
We love that.
It's a great.
Yeah, Jim just called in, his computer died, but sixteenth is good in the morning, and he'll call in, and he asked you and Tom to close the meeting when we were done.
Okay, so why don't we say nine o'clock on the sixteenth?
Okay.
Very good.
And thank you for the work and everything you did. Thank you. So I think that's it.
Thanks for everybody's time.
Thank you very much.
Yep.